The consent agenda tonight, we have had a chance to do the pre-meeting for this. So just want to break you through the agenda. So that we have a couple of budget amendments to move money from existing capital projects that can be on the budget to include someone that came into over budget. You can see that on these same items. We all have a public hearing on the budget as well as the economic development incentives. This will be the second read for this other ways franchise agreement tonight. Then we have two small new business items that we want to discuss with you. One would be the recreation, the creation of that recreation parks in various committees and location of where media can stand when the funding is forced.
So what, just wanted to know if you just make sure it was aware on the economic development hearings, so the, the numbers that are outlined there are the, are what the organizations request. Based on our deliberations, they are not what we are expecting to actually do. For the purposes of the hearings, we listed the maximum they, that theoretically could be approved, right? So that it's covered. We did decide, hey, let's give them the full amount that we covered in the public hearing to stress that. But those are not the amounts that based on our discussion, we are actually planning on, just so make sure it was, I don't see those numbers like, oh my gosh, that's way higher than what I thought it was. In most cases, it's not what we're actually planning to do.
Thank you for answering my questions.
All right. So if there's no questions on any of that, we can move into our pre-meeting. Rachel will be first up. Affordable Housing Committee.
Great. Good afternoon. Matt Abel from the Planning Department and I, Rachel and I, the Strategic Department are here to provide an update to you about the work of the Affordable Housing Committee. Once we share some information from staff, those members of the committee commissioners, Belcher, Edward, and Chairman Dimon, if there were further information that he wanted to share, and the other members of the board, we offer that opportunity. As a reminder, affordable housing is one of the strictly priorities for Buckland County. And we established a committee, which is a subcommittee of the Board of Commissioners, for the purpose of community engagement, gathering information from the public and community partners relating related to housing affordability and making recommendations on both policy and funding. We've had three meetings so far, meeting monthly on the third Tuesday of each month on a Board of Commissioners day and the afternoon. And we've been working on reviewing affordable housing investments in striking partnerships. And today are going to share information about the home investments, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a second, as well as the Affordable Housing Services Program and one of the projects that recommends the funding within that for the coming fiscal year. Briefly, before we get into those, this is a snapshot of the ways that Buckland County makes investments in the affordable home. From left to right, the Affordable Housing Services Program is sort of our largest area of investment. This is administered through the Planning Department and has a manual application process and supports a wide variety of various different kinds of housing projects, from new construction to home repairs, funding to community-based building investments. We also have home, which we'll talk about more in a second. This is a federal funding that is invested in the regional four county housing consortiums, of which Buckland County participates, and the city of Asheville is the lead agency for it. We also have special projects, all joint direction of Board of Commissioners, as well as the work of this committee, our effort is to roll in the future those special projects into a more consolidated process into the Affordable Housing Services Program. But special projects in the past have included things like Walker Heights funding, partnering with Mountain House and Forest Easy spaces. And finally, we have a range of supporting contracts and grants that may be homelessness service funding or other funding partnerships that are associated with affordable housing, but not directly administered through the Planning Department. Like one of the strategic partnership grants that while they're recommending or funding, it's on the proposal list for discussion to On Track Financial Education Council, which does some home buyer education. I'll allow Matt to cover briefly the recommendation around the home approach.
Sure. The home program match total investment is $123,214. That includes an annual budgeted amount of $75,000 as well as additional funding from prior year program incomes. That money is returned to the county as a programmatical income and then returned home program match funds where it was unneeded or unused. The recommendation of the committee is to support the creation of 23 different units with that investment. That includes 87,908 to support workforce homestead incorporated, DeJasper Project. This is a 100-unit apartment complex located at the intersection of Waterless and Road and US 70 in the Swan and Noa area. And this project received the actual home allocation through the consortium. They did not receive their full request of $400,000, so this regulated application of funding would bring them to their full request. It is a multifamily rental construction project. They are seeking tax credit for that particular project. This would give them the full request that they had made. And the tax credit project, we should know about the award for that particular tax credit in August of this year, so we'll know if that project will advance or not. In the event it doesn't advance, that's typically when we might see return of funds, and they'll see those tax credits again, and it'll go back through the whole process. So that information would certainly be shared with the committee at that point. Additionally, the balance of the $123,000, which is just over $35,000, is recommended to support the Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity project. This is a four-unit, single-family development. It's an infill parcel of 1.5 acres off of Burgard Road. Their original request was for $100,000 at the home process. This is the balance that we had available and that we will be offering to Habitat. It supports roughly 1.4 units, so just between one and two units. But with that project, they can seek additional funds through the Affordable Housing Services Program or other avenues to support that particular development.
We also are bringing information about recommendation for the upcoming fiscal year's Affordable Housing Services Program. The committee had discussion on the side of it in their most recent meeting, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about the Old Haywood Development from Nashville Area Habitat for Humanity in a second. And that is being included as a portion of this fund, recommended at the amount of $688,800 as well as $49,000 for the Global Home Movement Program. And then a large $581,795 left at this time, unprogrammed or available to be allocated through the process, which will be coming up in the next few weeks related to the annual cycle for Affordable Housing Services Program. A portion of this recommendation, which I just wanted to highlight, was the committee in selecting the amount to recommend for Habitat for Humanity's Old Haywood Development had reduced by $88,155, as the recommendation of the committee was to reduce the overall 4,000, so it's a ton of that amount rather than to return it to another project. So a recommended budget reduction, which the county manager will speak to in the budget hearing presentation in the year. So the board action on this would be budget adoption, just to look at the committee.
So the Old Haywood Neighborhood Project, this is for Phase One. It's a two-phase project that will include $688,800. That was the recommendation of the committee to apply funding. The purposes of that are for down payment assistance, so that's actually to assist Habitat for Humanity in covering the full cost of the home and making that home available to a home buyer, so thereby reducing their investment as a home buyer into the property, giving them that down payment assistance. This is to be paid out to Habitat in FY20, as Rachel mentioned, it's contended on the budget approval later this month. And Habitat will be presenting information about the project, and we're fully at a future board meeting.
And at that time, we will have an opportunity to vote on the contract, and the motion would be to allow the manager to enter into that contract and execute it. So you'll have an opportunity to probably approve this project. Here are some basics about what you'll hear from them at that time.
Right. And so the total project is for a 98-unit project. There are 38 units in Phase One. Construction is actually already underway. They've started doing some work on the property. You're scheduled to complete the Phase One by spring of 2023, so it's a fairly quickly moving project. The total Phase One financing is $6.8 million. They have previously received an Affordable Housing Services Program award of $240,000. And so that purposes was in part construction loan and part down payment assistance. And so the recommendation from the committee provides additional down payment assistance, but falls completely within the program parameters of the cap $20,000 per unit with those two separate awards being combined.
Looking ahead to the coming months, we'll be, like I mentioned, working on the application process for the next cycle of the Affordable Housing Services Program, working with community partners, Homeward Bound, who the committee heard from a few meetings of committee meeting about a development project that that organization is working on, focusing on people who are chronic with homelessness, as well as engagement with various community partners also working on the Affordable Housing space. So ask if there are any questions, and we'll turn it over to the Commissioners or whoever's next.
I'll only make one comment on this. They have an 89% success ratio on this.
On the Homeward Bound program.
And so we're thinking that would be significant project during the next month. Inter next question.
That's architectural drawing, a mockup of the building that would be the actual home and house by Homeward Bound that's on the screen. And so, correct, we had spoken with them prior, earlier in this fiscal year. The project is evolving somewhat. I mean, at that, when we talked about it last, they were thinking that they may request an FY20 funding, and they have not. They would be likely to request FY21 funding.
So the commission will receive the full presentation.
Once we make representation.
Just a quick question. In some of our conversations in the past, we use the Affordable Housing Services Program and Housing Trust kind of interchangeably. And I just wondered, are you all thinking about those as kind of the same thing? Is there a technical distinction? Just because I want to make sure I'm using the right terms over time.
I think it's, I think now that we have the committee, and we have been talking about that question, right? And so this idea of like special projects, you know, just kind of these big things that kind of might come out of wherever. I mean, my, just speaking for myself, my sense is that over time, this might all kind of merge together into more of like, this is our pool of affordable housing funds that the county's investing and looking at that and a more kind of a way that all those funds are kind of considered together and in a competitive process where we invite, you know, basically, here's how much money we have to spend, community, come forward with your best ideas. And so the sort of special projects and Affordable Housing Services Fund might eventually kind of get merged together more, but it's, we haven't done that, but that's just been sort of my sense for how this might evolve over time.
And that's not a term that we've been using at the committee level, it's how the trust functions much like that? Other jurisdictions call their own housing trust funds. I'm thinking of the budget office, if that language is in any of our budget documents, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think the other thing, you can give the, you know, legal definitions of what a term is, you know, we have to be really careful about that, you know, about what committee is, what a trust is and so on. But for me, I was just educated on what they, really what they had to mean on the Affordable Housing Board allowed me to be educated in some ways, or how they were, how those were being implemented. So that was, that was very helpful.
It would not be a trust fund, because we have decided that.
Okay.
Like you said, it would be legal.
Yeah.
Where you say the trust.
So it deserves sort of Affordable Housing or sort of special projects.
So trust would be a special designation that we, at some point.
Because that's got some revolving elements with program income, and so we have to be careful not to use or have a certain count.
Thank you.
Right. And so, you know, we, unlike the early childhood education, I mean, we're investing a significant amount of money in this arena, you know, it's definitely grown lately, and this is another significant in the budget for this year. But we actually don't have a policy saying funding will be annually preserved at this level over time. So, so I think that's probably the sense that we're not going to reduce it. That's not what the board wants to do. But we don't, it's not technically a policy. If we did create it as a policy, then that might make it more like a trust. Is that the right way to think about that? Okay, so word.
Oh, I'm not, not me.
No, I freaking answer, I have an answer, but if you even put money there, always put it aside in a trust on a party, it would really be a trust.
So it'd be more like, we call it a fund.
Right.
Jasmine and I just like died because it feels a lot like the conversation we've been having, we've been talking to the residents, the idea of scaling up to a certain level of investment and putting it in a certain place in our budget, earmarked for that purpose. Any other questions?
It's exciting. Thank you all for the committee.
Is everybody here and what's on the mics?
It's the county manager that we can't hear, she's not up at the mic.
All right, thanks. All right, thanks, Matt. Thank you.
So next, we'll try to reach out to school achievement gap, they are upstairs now.
Good afternoon, everyone. Brad Watt, this is Rusty Mall, Department of Commerce Management. At your most recent meeting with these schools that are under the budget request process, there was a number of questions levied by this board. Many were answered, some were not, and so we're here today to help hopefully answer many of those for you. What we're not here to do is to diagnose and prescribe, that is not our expertise. We're hoping to inspire some more questions from you and then ask little guidance of what we can do next. So the, a lot of the questions pertain to the achievement gap, and there's been some articles and discussion ongoing in the community about that already. And so we'd like to just kind of lay out very quickly what the achievement gap is at a sort of a most base level, and then explore that with you all. So as you'll see, here's any significant persistent disparity between some groups in achievement over time. And so that could be any two groups, that could be between boys and girls, or in the case that we'll be talking most about today, between our white students and our black So this is going to be just briefly technical, I apologize in advance, I do just want to kind of give a brief on some of the sources of information, what we've been doing so far, just to be very clear in the board. So when you see at the proficiency levels there, so our students take a test at the end of grade or end of course, and if they score a three, four, or five proficiency level, they're considered to be proficient. So when we say a student was proficient, that means that they fell into one of those three proficiency levels. And then below that, you'll see the different tests that we levy in various grades that they are given in. So math and reading, all grades three through eight, science only in five and eight, and then in high school, there are only four tests. If you're in high school full-time with us in West Carolina, you only take four tests during your tenure. And which are listed by biology, English two, math one, and math three. All this information comes from the Department of Public Instruction of the state, as did most of our data. So we worked with our partners, we met with them a few weeks ago, kind of discussed with them what we were going to talk about, got a lot of our answers, our questions answered, had a great discussion with them, and I'd like to acknowledge that a lot of them are here today. We have representatives from Buckland County and Nashville City in the room. And so if there are technical questions that need to be dug into, I may defer you all to the board if needed. But you'll also see the various things that we're going to discuss today, based on some of your questions from that last meeting. So we do have the achievement gap between black and white students, between white and all minority students, and then the gap between economically disadvantaged and non-economically disadvantaged students. We're also going to touch on the graduation rate and the growth index that Buckland County spoke to. One of the big questions that came out was what are the makeup, what is the makeup of each of our districts? And so we have a quick summary here, those numbers are slightly rounded just to make it quick for you. But this is the 2017, 2018 makeup of our schools. A lot of the information we're going to show you is going to be over five years, and we even know that those populations change in the fall over time, so we're just talking about 2017, 2018 here.
So can you hold on a second? The non-EDS, that basically means kids from affluent families?
Yeah, so EDS is defined here as any student who comes from a family that would qualify them for free and reduced lunch. And I can also speak to it a little bit more in a few minutes, but it's very difficult to get at a number, there's a lot of security and privacy around it, so we're not allowed to dig into it too much.
But the EDS number and the non-EDS adds up to 100%?
It does.
So you're one or the other?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions here?
I just don't want people in the room to ask those percentages. 39% and say you're 54%. Yes.
So when we pivot to thinking about proficiency, it's really a question of how well students are performing. So they take this standardized test, they're given a level, one, two, three, four, or five, and the state has defined proficient for your grade level is getting a level three or higher. So we'll start to walk you through some of these, some of these charts to kind of show what's called the, what's defined as the achievement gap, but to look at proficiency. So it really starts with a story of, take for example, a particular elementary school, which we've got highlighted here, to think about all the students that have taken math and have achieved grade level proficiency, so level three or higher. And you see that for this school, what we've highlighted here, and we'll continue to build upon this chart to walk you through that, is this is the student subgroup of white students. So you see that grade level proficiency is slightly increasing each year as they advance, and they're just under that 70 mark for the most recent school year. When we think about a gap, what we want to overlay is we want to look at where that line is for the white student subgroup, and then whatever other subgroup that we're comparing to. The kind of the entry point into this conversation was particularly for white students and black students. So when we add in that line of black students, we look at their proficiency. So you see that blue line is that exact same measure, it's that percent of students in grade level proficiency, but it really starts to prompt more of the questions. Why was there that dip in 2016? Why are they improving over time? And it really helps us to start to highlight what we've heard, what you might see in a table, but to try to put it in a little bit more digestible format. So here you can see in that most recent example, for this particular elementary school across the white student subgroup, black student subgroup, most recently in Matthew G., there was a 17-point achievement gap. So that's kind of the concept that we're walking through with district level examples. So like I said, this conversation originally started around really focusing on the black student and white student achievement gap. So if we think about Asheville City Schools first, we think about all students, this is just that grade level proficiency for all students over time. You can see that relatively consistent over time, this is the entire district looking at everyone. Now I'm going to pivot to the achievement gap, and again, that top line will be the white student subgroup, the bottom line will be the black student subgroup. So a couple takeaways here, obviously, there's a drastic achievement gap. It is continuing to increase, and you see that most recently is that 62 points across the district.
So if I go, have a question. Okay. So there's the English and math and biology, science test, so this graph sort of summarizes as like an amalgamation of all of those and an average of all of those, right? So let's say math was higher, but English was lower, this sort of represents an averaging of all of this.
It's an aggregate across all subjects, across the whole district, as reported by the committee.
One point I'd like to make, we'll tie back into the demographics of the county and city. We showed you the numbers for the entirety of the city population. Kindergarten through second grade does not test them represented here. It's fairly even, we expect, through those grades, but there is, you know, we're losing three grades there entirely, so this only shows our third grade through high school, but it is the aggregate of all tests.
So to continue the conversation, it's important to look at both of our school systems. Within Buckland County, again, this is the achievement of all of our students. So again, relatively consistent over time, they're around that 60% mark. When you look at the achievement gap in Buckland County, I'll jump there now. So here you see, not as drastic, but still a stark achievement gap, even in Buckland County schools, between our white students and our black students. Like I said, these charts really help talk more questions, and it makes us start to ask the questions of, why is there still a gap? What underlying factors, systemic or non-systemic, might contribute? And, you know, why do we see these differences? And we'll come back to that. So we pivoted from the original topic of white and black students. We wanted to say, okay, we know that the demographic makeup of the two school systems is different, so we wanted to look at white students compared to minority students and see what trends we see there. So you've seen the kind of the trends for all students as a whole, so I'm sure the Asheville City School, this is, white students is that top line again, and then see the minority students, that most recent achievement gap. You know, I'll jump to Buckland County schools here.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not completely following this slide. So this is white minority students in the city district. Didn't the previous slide show that it was 62 points?
That is.
Okay, okay, so Hispanic, I'm sorry. For a second.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, thank you. I'm caught in a little deal.
The definition of minority is Asian, black, immigrant.
Okay. Where does multiracial students fall?
Multiracial, so last name Pacific Islander, mostly racial and other.
With this one?
Yes, yes.
The county's part of minority.
Not much. So only white, non-hispanic students are counted?
What about cranium malignant?
Those do typically get picked up into a white, non-hispanic subgroup. As far as I'm aware, with the Department of Public Construction, you can't break out non-white students.
Well, if it does break out, I'm not saying that it would and they threw, but it could break out in the UBS. And I'm assuming you're going to show that to us.
And then I'll show the same chart of white minority students for Buckland County schools.
So in both cases, when you aggregate all non-white students, the gap shrinks by about 20 points.
It's about 50%, it looks like about 50% improvement in Buckland County over, over Asheville City.
So, and you remember the slides might show the student, part of the dynamic with the gap is that the white students in the city schools are actually performing better, which creates a bigger gap, right? So it doesn't, so to just be aware of that, because the gap's bad, that part of, part of the map of that is that the city students in the city district who are white are overperforming compared to the county and the state, so that makes the gap bigger too.
Also, it looks like they're on a deep financial.
So the white students are performing around 80 versus 69? So it's a 10-point differential.
Yeah.
So, so if you, so the minority students in the city are doing around 40 or a little bit less, that go to the county again? So they're in the high 40s instead of around. So they're in the high 40s instead of around?
Are you going to overlay this on EDS or?
So we will cover that in that next section is EDS.
Part of our job is to get way ahead of you.
Yeah.
Just keep the same thing. Keep your hands over your head.
And so I touched on a minute ago, some of the information that ties into students that are categorized as economically disadvantaged is limited. So if you walk into a school today, a lot of the times the principals aren't even allowed to know if a student is on the free lunch. And so it is hard for them as educators to identify who needs extra intervention until, you know, something more restricted is coming out from that specifically. Additionally, information that allows to kind of emulsify indicators, so I couldn't tell you necessarily economically disadvantaged within the white subgroup, within the minority subgroup, within the black subgroup. A lot of that information is just beyond us right now, it's something we cannot access. I don't know if that's something that we have on the horizon. We're optimistic is that we provide a lot of information. However, what we do have here is just a whole student body look of, in both school districts, the economically disadvantaged students versus their non-EDS counterparts and how they've performed. So here is Asheville City Schools. You'll see again a fairly large gap. It is worth noting that the, to Chairman Newman's point, the non-EDS students are scoring higher than even the other, any other group we've shown so far, and much higher than the state average. And then here for Buncombe County, there's a slightly less, smaller achievement gap. The non-EDS students are scoring quite as high, or the proficiency percentage is not quite as high, so that was certainly. So we also heard input from the local school districts on graduation rates. I want to take a minute and just make sure that we have a good understanding of graduation rate, how we can line up and sometimes not line up, other information we've shared today. So when you hear a graduation rate reported, you often hear the term the four-year cohort. And so what that does is if you enter into one of our high schools in North Carolina in ninth grade, you are a member of that high school's cohort. If you leave the district through a certain number of approved means, like you transfer to another district, etc., by documentation, you are removed from that cohort. Otherwise, you're responsible for that student ninth to 12th. So it looks at the number of students that we started with in that school in ninth grade, what percentage of them graduated in four years? And so that's what we talk about when we talk about graduation rate. It is also worth noting that graduation rate and proficiency are not directly tied together. I mentioned earlier, you don't take four standardized tests across your 20-plus credits in high school. So you could theoretically fail all four of those or not achieve proficiency. All four of those tests graduate on time fine.
So just to drill down on that for a second. I mean, do we understand that there are children who are scoring, say, a two, starting from the earliest time they're tested and they continue advancing grade to grade to grade, they're graduating high school having passed with that level of proficiency throughout their K-12 degrees?
It is completely plausible. Some of that longitudinal tracking of students over time is something you'd very much like to get into. We just have not, that's a lot, that's a, logistically is a very difficult thing to do.
But there's swaths of hundreds of kids who are struggling at this level and yet moving from grade to grade and then...
And so my mother's an educator, and I've been meeting with educators a lot recently. I'd also like to mention that this is a point in time, this is one day, I sat and took a test. There's evidence that also shows if you don't eat breakfast that morning, you're going to lose 20 points.
Sure.
So they could be, I mean, these are good numbers, these tests are reliable, but there are those just hard to tie down influences.
But if you've missed a meal, you're struggling in different ways. I mean, I think that when we're looking at the, I mean, the number of children struggling profoundly.
Well, you know what bothers me is one thing that nobody talks about since these tests have been in place. We're so dumb at them now that I'm concerned about the kids who get fours out. You know, what, who are we putting on the streets out of our schools today? And we're spending a heck of a lot of money, but we're not getting any return. Especially in the city. It's horrible for 4,300 kids what they are doing. You know, I question the leadership and everything else. What's going on?
So it also provided here the graduation rate between white students and black students in both of our local education authorities for you. You'll see a little bit more fluctuation over time in a lot of the Asheville City Schools drafts. Part of that is just because we have a standpoint, smaller population, those fluctuations are a little bit more sensitive. Relatively stable over the five years, all things considered, a little bit of nuance in 2016. The graduation rate in Buncombe County seems to be trending upward.
Any thoughts on the drop in 17 and 18 from VCS HR here? Is that a low number or did anyone think of it? And I don't need to interrupt, but you get back to us.
I want to circle back around to Commissioner Beach Ferrari's comment about proficiency. It's been about 12 years of my career in adult education and adult literacy. And this was a problem that had been in existence from the beginning of educational time, of students being passed from grade to grade to grade. And if I'm understanding from kind of being inundated in the educational world to some degree that parents still have to agree to a child being held back. So some of these numbers, I think, could potentially be reflective that there wasn't parental support to hold them back in order to increase their proficiency on their test scores. So I know that that probably can't be fleshed out because those are family decisions, but definitely something to take into account that a family could simply make that decision for their child and still impact these numbers at the end of the day.
And this is the graduation rate, same split at the same time. This is the difference here between white and all minority students.
So at the presentations from the schools, you heard about growth specifically from Buncombe County. And it's important to understand the interaction of proficiency and growth and look at both of those in tandem. Because the concept of growth is that regardless of a student's background, regardless of that support, you can improve them when you hit them on August 1, and you can have them in a better place growing at the end of May. So that's why there's that emphasis there. So when we think about this, growth is truly the academic progress made over time. And we'll look at that, and the state has some pretty sophisticated tools to look at. You know, what was the state average for growth and who's growing more, kind of faster than the state average? And who's growing less, a little bit slower than the state average? So if we think about proficiency and growth, you want your students ultimately to be highly proficient, but also continuing to learn, whether it's a, Commissioner White said it's a four and five student continuing to grow. So if you think about this matrix that we've outlined here, high proficiency and high growth, things are kicking good. You know, those students are learning and they're also growing. If you have high proficiency but lower than average growth, you might start to ask some questions. You know, why is that? You know, what's going on here? These students are performing well, they're not growing as much. Similarly, if you have high growth but low proficiency, okay, was it an input? Why they were, you know, from the prior grade that the proficiency was lower. But what's going on if they're growing? What strategies are working? And then the last example would be low growth and low proficiency. Now I bring the cause for alarm, okay, what's going on here? What can we get into? So I want to show you this similar concept with our actual Buncombe County both school system schools. So this is a distribution. Each point there represents an individual school. Blue triangles are Asheville City Schools, the orange circles are Buncombe County Schools. This is kind of where they lie as a school on the proficiency scale compared to the state average and percent of students that are grade level proficiency. And then on a growth from left to right of low growth, lower than state average, or high growth, higher than state average.
So the top left, the kids' test boil, they're just not improving?
At those schools, yeah, they're, a higher percentage is at grade level proficiency, but they're growing slower or less than that state average. And I want to, let me take this a step further so that I can give you that context of what percent of our schools fall where. If you think about that upper right, that high proficiency, high growth, you see a third of Asheville City Schools are in that quadrant. Half of Buncombe County Schools are in that quadrant. Think about the upper left, that high proficiency but lower growth. You've got over half of Asheville City Schools are in that high proficiency. About a quarter of Buncombe County Schools, that lower right, that low proficiency but high growth, you see 12% of Buncombe County Schools. And then in that low proficiency, low growth, you see 11 and 12% of students.
Is this for what year staffed up?
This is for 2018. One thing that's important to note that's a little bit nuanced here is when you look at this in this aggregate level, it doesn't tell the same story as those achievement gaps that we showed you. At that aggregate level, we are doing some great things in Buncombe County, but we really need to make sure that we're still tracking those targeted examples and making sure we're trying to improve everyone and focus strategies there. If you think about overall, there's a concept of high proficiency in this upper half. You know, that's good, our kids are fours and fives and are performing well. There's also high growth. We want to make sure our kids are improving while they're with our school system. But our goal ultimately, we want to make sure our kids are moving into that upper right quadrant where they are performing high and they're continuing to grow while they're with us.
Forgive me if you have this, can this be broken off by race? The proficiency and growth index?
I don't believe that the growth index can be.
Okay.
But that's a great follow-up question. So we want to leave you with next steps. And we want to really talk about what you all want to see from this, where you want to go. Obviously, the schools ultimately own the achievement, the results, the scores. But if you think about, that's only half the story. Commissioner Beach Ferrari, you mentioned the, you know, somebody missing a meal. There's a lot of inputs that go into the school system, and it's inputs up until kindergarten and it's inputs every single day. So if we think about where the county has already a pretty strategic focus, it's things like affordable housing, it's early childhood education, it's educational enrichment. That was one thing the school specifically mentioned about more contact points after school program, immediately on the right transportation, giving kids their public health, public safety, and child protection. And it's really important to note that all the things that we focus on as a county really come back to inputs to that education. And we're uniquely positioned to focus on those elements.
And then I mentioned as we began, we've been meeting with schools. We've met one time now with some of their staff members, people that were well ingrained in their analytics and also their curriculum. And both parties have agreed to continue working with us if that's something you all would like to see. And we'd like to use that relationship, leverage the assets we have here to kind of provide them some support, dive into that analysis a little bit deeper with them. And we, this is just the surface. We know that there's years and years of data we can look into. We can track a student over time. We can look into a single test and look at the four sub areas that are in there and see if maybe, you know, a student didn't do well on math because, you know, actually it's the problem solving that's thrown in for a curveball because their reading is, you know, blunt. There's a lot of opportunity out there for both the educational authorities and us to kind of make some waves and then really understand and then better equip our educators with tools and information to intervene as early as possible and, you know, keep them from falling behind in kindergarten through fourth and then that being just ripples down to the next years of their education. So we would love to hear your thoughts on what other questions you might have now, what we can come back to you with, what we can do when we work with our partners.
I appreciate this presentation and I feel like it's helped kind of really sharpen the focus on a lot of the questions we have during the public meetings lately. And it sounds good to keep drilling into that data, but I also feel like it's incumbent upon us to connect what we're seeing here very clearly into the data we've gotten from the state of Black Asheville and the state of Black Buncombe County, which shows comparable and frankly, you know, deeply troubling and systemic disparities for black people in our community from the moment they're born through the entirety of their lives. I haven't seen our local maternal mortality data by race, but I have a...
It's bad.
I have a, yeah. So I think it's incumbent upon us at the level of thinking about this sort of at a community-wide level to be certainly partnering with the school system, but taking that much broader view and saying, you know, for the 80% of black children in the city school system, for instance, who are not scoring at grade level proficiency, those 730 or so kids, you know, it's a crisis, the house is on fire. And certainly, and again, I think as we're, you just connected those dots, but just to reiterate it sort of from a commissioner perspective, is I certainly see the investments in the work we're doing around early child education and the emphasis on that being trauma-informed and starting at birth, not just age four. All of that is informed by what we know seems to show the possibility of the needle for folks. But I don't know how, I mean, there's a lot of conversations around the young folks in the community about the achievement gap numbers. I don't think it's a lack of caring, I don't think it's a lack of concern. But I don't know how to look at this and say anything except it's on fire, you know? I mean, these are crisis-level numbers that speak to people struggling and suffering on the other side of them. So I don't know, I just want to make sure that we're not, I like data personally, but there's rabbit holes that can draw us down and making sure that we're kind of always centering the people in our community on the other side of these numbers in a way that this is absolutely connected to what we know about the experience of being black in Buncombe County throughout people's lifespan in terms of structural issues and inequities. That's just weighing heavily on my mind and heart as we kind of digest this information.
So I think I want to have some specific questions. One is I want to thank you guys. This is what y'all do.
Yes.
Okay. Y'all like it. Y'all like it.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, you do. I mean, you do. It's like you asked a question about, you know, you can take and do, dig down and go, this, 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 because that's what you do. And so what I want to try to do is, as hard as it is, is pull some emotion out of this and go to that. Because this is about, this is about facts and about things. You're not going to, you're not going to throw money at this problem. You're going to have to dig down and find out. You know, like we talked about, you know, kids not eating. Some don't eat because, you know, a parent don't, you know, tell them. You're going, by gosh, you're going to eat before you leave the house. And some don't eat because they don't have any food, you know? And so, but that does affect, that does affect the testing. Because we have some money set aside for certain things, it makes us that much more accountable to get this really good information, because if not, we'll make emotional decisions with that money. And it's very easy to do, and it's not that necessary or my own thing, because it's going to be, I don't feel good about it because my heart drives me in a certain direction. I'm equally concerned about making sure that the poverty that drives a lot of this, which goes beyond color. I want to make sure that both of those are being addressed from the poverty side, the minority side, you know, all of our children that are struggling. So we're going to have to have more data on, you said 730 kids, you know? That's specifically good for us to drill down into, you know, as far as you can drill down, you know, because of, without, you know, you don't want to do so much because of price. Drilling even farther, discovering things, we wouldn't discover, y'all can do that. I have, it has bothered me and it bothers a lot of people, I believe, in the, in trying to help these kids make better choices from a career standpoint. You know, and how are they tested? You know, I'm talking, I'm talking to all kinds of people that, you know, need HVAC and people. I mean, there's so many people out there that go to work, get in programs, and need help. And I'm wondering, you know, do the tests even, even, are we even testing for that anymore? I don't know. I don't know if we're testing to see proficiency of people with their hands as opposed to, I know math and reading are totally different. That's rocket science. Totally different math. But some people are, they're... Totally different math, but some people are, they're graded, you know, math and Legos and robotics, but they're just, they struggle with reading and so they test out, you know? But I want to make sure that we're digging more in here. You know, we talked about food, and I'll just say this, and I never, I wasn't able to get it happening, but my grandson told me, he said, "People, why didn't they take away the club salad, you know, from the food?" So, the nutrition that the kids are getting in schools, it'd be good for me to know whether, you know, how does this affect? And some poor kids need to go home with a full belt because they're not going to get enough dinner, you know? And if we really want to fix these, we're going to have to drill into some of that, that data that these guys can do. But diet, we mentioned that, you know, the middle school diner that, you know, that's done, you know, that, there are some kids being fed in the evenings, you know, measuring how, you know, these kids are being taken care of and helped, to me is important. You know, those numbers are scary, and I think somebody said you can't, you know, you 're not going to tell your educators it's not caring because they do. The numbers are numbers, and we got to figure out a way to fix them together and not panic over that. And I think these guys can deliver on some of those numbers. So, you know, I guess, just kind of, I'm just...
I want to thank you for what you've done, for what you've brought in for, but what's most frustrating for me is, we've known these facts for years, we've seen it kind of. I spent eight years on the school board, I spent 16 years on the university boards in the state. We have seen this information, but darn it, it's time for us to do something about it. You know, we can't continue to put our heads in the sand and just let these numbers go. 62 points? It's just unrealistic when you look at this and you think of the money that we put in schools here. We spend, what, over $90 million? When you look at the city, county and Buncombe town, and all are going down and in growth, you know, but we need to, it's time, and I'm glad to see it, and of course, we're putting things in place, sure, like PPK, affordable housing, we're looking at attacking this, but we've got to do more inside the schools. You know, you can't walk away from that. And when I look at what's the numbers and what's going on in these schools, look, folks, I've been fighting this all my life, and it's still not getting any better. I began to wonder, was I better off in the segregated schools? You know, I went to college, graduated with honors. I mean, I began to wonder, what, I don't know, that's, it's frustrating for me, but it's saying, I can't sit here and be quiet anymore. You know, we've got to do something about it as a community, and we do a good job of talking, but folks, it's time now for us to start walking the walk, because we know what needs to be done. Now let's do it. I mean, I'm just tired of going to meetings, talking about equity and all this. Look, I can teach the course on that, I've been to so many over the years, but nothing is being done, we're not getting anywhere. We're just forgetting about the Black population in this county when it comes to education. And if I hurt feelings, I'm sorry, it's time, because my feelings have been hurt for 74 years every time I look at this.
Thanks to both school systems for being so willing to turn over your data for the county to dig into. I know sometimes that's not easy to want to turn things over and not know what the result's going to be, so thank you for being courageous in doing that. What I want to stress to all of us is how we have to be very cognizant moving forward with the data that we have, that I'm afraid where we're heading is going to impact our K-12 system in a very undesirable way. I think that a great number of our educators, their morale is at rock bottom. After talking to a number of school board members and employees across both districts, and I want to be sure that in whatever way we begin to rally around and address these challenges in our community, that we are making sure that we are retaining our incredible teaching staff, our assistants, our administrators across both school systems, because without them, we are, we can't do this work. And we can look at other data and see, students are not entering the teaching profession anymore, those numbers are declining, nobody wants to be a teacher, this is probably part of the reason why. And I want to ensure that we are very cautious in how we wrap our community around our public schools and our teachers to work towards a solution. I mean, we're addressing hundreds of years of structural racism, not only in our two schools, but across our country when it comes to dealing with the public education crisis that we have. It is indeed a community problem, it's not going to take one meeting for us to solve it, and I want to be sure that we are, we are careful in saying, this is a, we're going to address it now and there are other ways that we can do this. What I would like to challenge my colleagues to do is to spend time, and I'm not talking 15, 20 minutes in a public school, a whole day. I think if you haven't done that, you're going to be really surprised what you see. The second grade teacher who is literally picking up the child who didn't have eaten up the night before and is lashing out because they're hungry, and they're interrupting the whole day and they pick them up and they hug them and they love them, that's what's happening in our schools. And if we're not in there seeing it, it's easy for us to wag our fingers and lay a lot of blame in areas that we don't know because it's not our day-to-day. I agree, food is a huge problem on testing day. They haven't had a meal that night before they take a test, it's the same kids who haven't had a meal at night, every single night before they come to school. So I also want to be careful, like you said, when we look at that testing, it's a point in time and how we led to that one point in time. This is a long-term solution, and I know people are tired of saying it's long-term, but I think we have to roll our sleeves up and really say, this cannot be addressed in six months, but our entire community, and I challenge our entire community today, not just those in this room, to say we're part of the solution and we're going to help. That's all I have to say.
Thanks for the data, thanks to the schools for helping to prepare this too, and, you know, for both districts, I think they've been very, you know, very forthcoming with the data and great analysis on these issues, but it's great to have it all consolidated as well, to kind of, so thanks to you guys for working to do that for the conversation today. You know, I, these are, as I said before, these are non-due problems, they've been with us a long time, and some things have gotten better, some things have not gotten better. And I agree that, you know, our responsibility in this area is to think about both what we can do to support the schools in the best ways we can to address these issues within the classrooms. And then, but I also think it's very important that we be thinking about these issues and what's happening outside the classrooms that's driving a lot of these results that cause some. I think a lot of these items have to do with the environment that the kids are living in, you know, and, you know, they arrive in the schools and the schools work hard to do the best job they can to work with them on their academic skills and development, but they're dealing with what, you know, the world, the world that these kids are living in. So I think there's a lot of things that we can do also outside the schools and need to be doing more on to address some of those issues. I think, I think one of the, and I know there's a lot of, as well there should be, a lot of privacy concerns around the data and individual kids and stuff like that. I do think it would be interesting if there is a way to do some additional analysis, basically kind of looking at neighborhoods, right? And like, you know, because my theory is that if you do that and like, kids from different neighborhoods, I mean, they're, they're, most of Buncombe County is a very safe county, our law enforcement does a great job, but there are some neighborhoods in our county that have dramatically higher levels of crime and where things happen on a routine basis that most of us never see or very rarely see. And so, you know, how are the kids from those neighborhoods doing in our schools? I think, I think if we do that kind of analysis, we'll see that there's a very powerful correlation between kids who struggle with schools and some of those environmental conditions they're dealing with. I mean, both school districts have been very clear to us that mental health concerns are very high on their list, things they want to focus on more, but a lot of those mental health concerns are growing out of problems that kids have in their neighborhoods and in their life outside of schools. So, and those are things that we can do something about, you know, we, and it, so it means working with schools, but it also means working with the sheriff's department, the Asheville Police Department, to do things to help address public safety in some of these neighborhoods that are not as safe as they should be. So, we're not, this is not even meaning where we're going to make decisions, but I'm glad we're having the discussion. I know different people have been doing different things to attend different meetings, but I thought it'd be great for us to spend a little bit of time having a commission-wide discussion about some of the data. So, to be continued. Any other comments from commissioners before we do have some other items we need to deal with before we...
Yeah, Bernie, like what you said right there, the data's good, but I think the community and each school, I mean, we go out into my district, 3 Kedler, I believe one school pulls the other school down, I'd like to see the data from communities, and I think we will see a lot of things change right there, and it goes right back to what everybody said. And I think Bernie hit the nail on the head right there, talking of the different communities of what they're facing.
Well, Lee, and y'all knew that.
It's possible, what we are looking into that, if some of it gets down to the granularity is like the feeder zone for a given school, but that it could, you know, it could cut a neighborhood in half, so we're going to continue to explore what options we have to get to that level of granularity for you.
So, you know, I just wanted, you know, I just want to say this, you know, the data's credible and you guys can, I'm sure can do whatever we ask them. And then, you know, what we talk about is, is, you know, is strategy, we strategize things, yeah? We do it all the time, and this requires, I believe, some specific goals. I'm going to be just basic with what Commissioner Edwards said, okay? In my mind, when you talk about, you know, people getting hungry when they get ready to take a test, in my mind, when, feed them. Why do we let a kid take a test that's hungry? Well, because it's scheduled for them, so why is it scheduled for them? Feed them, let them take it later. I mean, if you want to help the child, or do you want to, or you want to, you know, stay focused on the rules, or do you want to help the child? Okay? And I'm not saying we can do this, but I'm saying if a child is hungry, feed the child. Don't feed the child a salad, because somebody says they got to feed a salad. Feed that child lasagna. Can I get an amen from somebody back there? I'm telling you, I'm telling you, feed that kid. Forget the rules, you want to fix this? Knock the walls down, y'all have heard me say this before. You want to feed kids? I got churches who will feed kids. Knock the walls down. You want communities fed? There are people that will feed these children, knock the walls down. You want to help Black children? Knock the walls down. Open the doors and let's, I don't know what we can do, but knock the walls down. You know, is it because we need to feed the kids? Would it help with growth feeding kids? I don't know, would it, you know, could we look at that? Is there data associated with that? Would that help? I don't know. I'm preaching somewhere after half an hour, but I'm just saying that in getting into specific communities, and Bernie mentioned something that we really need to look more at too, is that I also, I personally don't like the term "public education." I like talking about kids, I like talking about schools, I like talking about Inca, I like talking about Johnston, and I like talking about certain Asheville High, I like talking about certain schools, and how are they doing and how are they performing, and trying to knock those walls down to just, and this is going to, I mean, you're going to get a little bit of preaching from my colleague, Commissioner Watson.
Not a little bit, for life.
And you're going to get it from, you're going to get it from, you're going to get it from me, who's a, you know, and our backgrounds shape what we do and who we are, you know, you know, and I, I mean, I come out of a very poor place in southern West Virginia, you know, in a coal mining community, and it drives our, you know, it drives our goals. Commissioner White's side come out of a different community, both of us have the same goal, but you guys can find this information, you know, sometimes y'all get a bad rap, you know, because people don't understand what you do, okay? Well, I get what you do, but we need to give you more specifics, County Manager can get help with that, you know, she, you know, very, her mind's spinning right now, I know, and, but, but I get it down to a simple goal, you got to get out of the strategy, you got to take a goal, okay? So let's just say, and I know we, I know we're on a time schedule, but we got time for this. Let's just say that an issue is kids being hungry at school, okay? Let's say that's our issue. Then we have to, then we develop a strategy in feeding those children, okay? We think that feeding those children will help their grades and close the gap. When we feed all those kids, and we don't shame them when they ain't got money to pay for their meals, we make sure they're fed, and in Buncombe County, we make sure they're fed. I don't know how to do that, y'all can, you had, you asked for a question, that's my question, okay? How do we come up with a specific goal if we believe that that would, if we do, if we believe that that would help our children, help our, help our schools, help education, help them test better, help them go home feeling better? We do some of that, we dad-lan it with the homework, with the homework diner, I've been to those, I've been in these schools, and it, that, that works. That works, families that are in there, I mean, it really does work, you know, everybody's excited and happy, but does, you know, does it help their scores and do they do enough?
So, we do need to wrap this up, but I think just kind of concluding thoughts, I mean, I think, you know, I don't have a specific schedule or anything like that, but I do, you know, obviously we're in the backside of our budget cycle, there's important decision stuff to be made now, there might be others once the state figures out where they're going to lean on on these different issues, which is the point of decision steps, we'll give that in short term, but, you know, part of, part of it is that I think we, you know, we talk a lot with our firmships and schools a lot during the budget process, but then when we're all done with the budget, I think we're all like, oh, thank goodness, that's over, and, you know, but we need to, I think we need to spend more time talking about these issues on a more ongoing basis. So I think that's one thing I would, you know, I would certainly like to be supportive of, we haven't figured out the structure for that, you know, today. But I do think we, I do think we need to be thinking about specific policies, you know, a lot of things work great day in, day out, and so, but what are the, you know, what are the, what are the additional things, you know, both in the schools, that working with the schools, we can do, and then what are the other specific things that are outside the schools that we need to be looking at that will make a direct impact on these issues and probably other, a lot of, a lot of other things going on in these kids' lives that we can, we can do better on? So, so those are, anyway, those are my concluding thoughts. Anything else before we, any other commissioners before we move on to the next slide of this meeting? All right, all right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Can't hear you back here.
Thanks, Jerry. I was just saying that we have agreed that we'll be more often with educational partners throughout the year, so you'll get more frequent updates, it's just not a wrong budget. As Rusty and Brad continues their analysis, we continue to be near the schools and bring that to you.
Great. Mr. Ward.
Hello? Hey, how you doing? Good, how's everything?
What went before that? As you're all aware, we received our letter from the local government, telling us that they want to know how we're going to address the situation.
they want to know how we're going to address the findings and that we need to respond within 45 days of the letter. So, I have gone through and together a letter in response and I provided you with a copy of that. Didn't know if you would like to go through each one of those responses, findings, or how you would like to... Yeah, sure. Why don't we just briefly, I mean, some of them might just give a couple of comments, others might be more in-depth, so just go ahead.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, so, the first finding that they had was on the schedule of expenditures in federal and state awards. Basically, we overstated some revenue on that report and that was a result of a direction that the treasurer had given us or had provided prior county staff who were no longer here didn't, they didn't help relay that information, so we were unaware of the change. So, we have put together a item on our quarterly checklist so that we will review guidance that's provided by the LTC or the treasurer's office or whoever it may be. And in addition, at the end of the year, we will go through and make sure that any procedures that may have changed related to the CE setup, we will kick those up and make sure that's taken care of. The second finding was related to the other post employment benefits. They're saying we have no ready policy to review and approve schedules and journal entries and that sort of thing. We are in the process of developing procedures for that. We'll ensure that all journal entries and your work papers are prepared and reviewed by two separate staff members with adequate knowledge and understanding of the subject matters. Again, this goes back to the turnover, so we had people missing that didn't, weren't able to do this or that. The third item is wire transfers. The auditors recommended the county formalize and document its monitoring of administrative functions, banking website particularly, particularly as it relates to wires and initiation, initiation and approval of those wires. I went out and verified with Wells Fargo that we already have those in place, so any preform wire templates that can be modified or created require dual approvals, so there's no way that somebody can go out and create a wire and also approve it. Apparently, there was one wire, it was a legitimate wire that actually wasn't initiated and approved by the same person in 2018, so that could never happen again.
And our, our wire transfers, pretty rare in an organization like the county, is like for big payments or are they like routine, small payments, happens all the time?
I mean, every time we send money to the schools or cities or anything like that, it's a wire transfer.
With big businesses, I think, county, it's billions of dollars of wire transferred all over the country, hardly almost now.
So, these are not necessarily senior staff who need to approve these, because these are routine and a lot of them are not necessarily long-term years.
Most of the wires are set up as a template, so it takes one person to create the template, another person to approve it. And once it's approved as a template, anybody with access to wires, which we have that list that's been verified, duties access to that, can initiate that template and just send that out. So, there, those are the routine payments going to Black Mountain and Asheville schools and that sort of thing. The fourth item was around water surety bonds. There was no reconciliation going on between the planning department and finance department, again, as a result of turnover in their department as well as in finance. We have already met with planning and we are reinitiating the conversations and making sure that they're giving us information and we're reconciling it so we can avoid that finding in the future. Fifth one was around those insurance policies and getting the funds back into the county. That was a very unique situation, was a one-time item and we have procedures in place now and we also have a monthly and annual checklist to make sure that any unusual items like that will make sure that we get reported properly. Yeah, that was just an oversight on staff's part, so that will not happen again.
So, we don't need any, we don't need any new policies on insurance, we just need to make sure our existing policies are correctly followed.
Absolutely. Construction in progress, there were some assets that were in 2017 were not reported, they were still sitting out there as basically in progress when they were substantially complete, should have been recorded and on our books as an actual asset. We have now, we have quarterly meetings to discuss the projects, where they are on the budget, where they're in progress, and then finance staff is going to regularly meet with budget staff to discuss where we have budget, are these projects actually complete so that we can get them reported in a timely fashion so we can eliminate that.
Does that require any change to current policy for that?
It's, it's, it was just with everything going on and the turnover of staff, duties that should have been getting done on a regular basis and were getting done in years past just went into practice. So, now we've got people in place, we are in the process of doing cost training, so we have multiple people that are aware of what's going on, what needs to get done on a monthly basis. We're updating all of our checklists on quarterly, monthly and annual basis. All those check, are being updated so that we can make sure that as we go through them, everything's getting done and as things change, those checklists are getting updated. And that's what a lot of this is, is just making sure that we are updating the checklist, adding new ones. Management time cards, those were not getting updated. That was the old system. Workday has eliminated that problem because we go through the system and they get approved. With the exception of the sheriff, the register of deeds and...
Is there other legislation?
Sheriff, register of deeds?
Clerk of court?
Clerk of court. Everybody else is ruled by... Procurement card transaction limit increases. This finding was actually, it wasn't, it shouldn't, in my opinion, it should not have been a finding. The department director requested the limit. They requested it through accounts payable, who then relayed that that's a procurement to who then took care of it. According to our policy, the department director is supposed to do that in writing directly to procurement, so that was the breakdown. We are developing a electronic workflow that is in the process of working with performance management to get that up and running so that whoever initiates it, it will go to the department director, they will approve it and then it will go on.
You know, I think it's okay to, you know, for these findings to be in here because it creates conversation, you know, between the departments and you sit out there with us, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea.
No, I mean, in my mind, that's a silly one. Especially when we had, he didn't even make it a left one. Then we have the revenue recognition. The auditors recommend that the county formalize and document procedures over the recognition of revenue posted in the general ledger. This has to do with the, the different systems out there. There's automatic transfers that post to the general ledger. They want to make sure that we have procedures in place and that somebody is reviewing that before the automatic transfer happens. So, we're working on that. We will have a reconciliation process to ensure that what went in is correct, so it may occur after the fact, but at least we'll be able to verify that what is in there is correct. That will satisfy the auditors. The auditors recommended that we formalize our policies and procedures over general spurs myths, implementing monitoring and procedures to ensure controls are operating efficiently. Again, this is being corrected with Workday. As invoices are entered, they go through the workflow and the proper people are authorizing. In the prior system, it could have been put in and wasn't necessarily getting approved, could see where it was approved, even though it was approved, so we are eliminating that problem. Invoice accrual, this is just a matter of, again, not updating the checklist to make sure that you're doing the right things at the end of the year. So, we will make sure that the, the checklists are updated, there's all policy in place, we're ensuring that we are getting the invoices that are for the correct year posted to the right year. Because if they come in after June 30, depending on they're for 2019 or they're for 2020, we gotta make sure we are pulling those back. We did not have proper procedures in place, so there was a couple invoices that should have been back in 2018 and were just paid in 2019, so we're fixing that. The payroll accrual, the system was set up to do an automatic payroll accrual every pay period, the new system. The auditors looked at that, they tested it and found that it didn't necessarily accrue the right amount. So, the simple solution is we turned off that automatic accrual and we will go back to doing it the old-fashioned way, which is calculating, which is all you really need to do is calculate it at the year end, so it was really the correct amount. EMS billing, the auditors recommend the development of implemented procedures and control feature, complimentary controls or EMS billing functions are properly implemented. So, we are scheduling a meeting with EMS department for this month, we sit down, meet with our collection representatives, EMS staff and get in sync to make sure we are ensuring they have the proper controls and that our controls are complimentary to those. Sheriff's Office manual check process, they have checks for when a inmate is released in the middle of the night. They need to give them their funds, so there is the locked cabinets in the detention center that has a camera on it that is behind locked doors. However, those checks are already signed and according to our auditors, too many people have access to that. We do utilize positive pay, which means if somebody were to write the check and not put it through positive pay, which notifies the bank the check has been written, we would get notified if we need some payment. So, there's safeguards in place. This finding, I don't know, we're gonna meet the sheriff's staff in a couple weeks and talk about, are these procedures adequate? And if so, then we can just make the argument with the auditors that we believe we have enough safeguards in place. If not, we will figure out what the proper safeguard should be, but that will be addressed. Expense reimbursements, so in previous system, expense reports were not getting approved for department heads by the county manager or county manager doesn't need with Workday. Those now go through the automatic workflow process, documentation has to be attached and they are gonna go to, like mine would go to Apple's and she would approve it and it works just fine.
Right. It's not a given.
Hopefully she'll approve it.
Now, who approves that?
Nobody formally approves it, but my staff reviews it and makes sure that they are appropriate and within policy and if they were not, then I will never have a conversation. And if that was a problem, then I'd have a conversation to deal with.
Good.
But that would be a problem. The next two findings are related to the single audits. The first one is because it was late, so our response to that is we'll make sure it's not late, which is ensuring that we get audit done on time, as long as we don't have significant turnover, new ERP system and all the other things that were going on, we should be fine. That's my commitment to all of you, is that we will get the audit done on time. And then the final item is the public school capital fund. There is a report that has to be filed within 60 days of project completion and they found that a couple of them had not been, so we are just making sure that we have good communication with schools and we're aware of what projects are getting done so that we can make that file, even though we don't have to file a report, we have to make sure it's filed. And that would be all of the responses. Any questions on any of those?
I think it applies to everyone.
Yeah, and that was supposed to say, you'll notice there's a line for everybody. So, I've already signed the original, so I won't pass this around.
Bring it around.
I'd like to just hear your input on one question, which is sort of what's your assessment of the totality of these findings? This is a much more in-depth process than we've had with past your audits and I'm finding it very helpful, but you look at these 18 findings, what's your kind of overall kind of diagnostic or assessment?
It really just speaks to the fact that when you have significant amount of turnover within staff with a new software system, things will fall through the cracks and if you don't have somebody that is coming in and making sure that everything's getting done, you will have significant amount of findings. These are not catastrophic findings, these are easily fixed and a lot of them are related to the software and some of them are being fixed by the new software. So, it's, it's one of those things where we're just gonna work through it and get them all done. It doesn't cause me really any disturbance as far as, oh my God, we had 17, 18 findings, what the heck's going on? It's more of, okay, these are items that could easily be fixed, we'll address them and we'll pull it.
Thanks.
Right, thank you, Bernie. Which is on the agenda for the meeting this evening, for presidential.
And this one, we keep...
And I want to give some credit to Mr. Rice, who is with us today for helping to ask us to look at these policies and talk them through and make sure we're all clear on how we want to handle, how the media is, where they're located in our meetings.
Yes, absolutely. So, we were asked to review the current policy regarding broadcasting and recording and make some recommendations to improve policy. So, I'm just gonna jump right into the recommendations. A basically states the same as the previous policy, we only add that, that anybody basically can film the meeting, but as long as they don't impede them the vision of the audience members. That's what A basically states. B, we met with a fire marshal, they came out and looked at the space and they decided that it needs to be stated somewhere here that we can't block ingress or egress from the meeting room. So, we added that to the policy as well, in A areas around the doors and exits must be kept clear due to fire code. So, we added that in the B section. And C and D, we added designated zones for media. So, we have a short, short, C says a short-term media zone located between the front right pillar and the commission desk can be used by media photographers, videographers for a maximum of 10 minutes per meeting. And D, a long-term media zone is located in the back of the room and this area is reserved for permanent placement of cameras by media photographers or videographers. And then E basically states that the board reserves the right to designate where any and all recording devices may be placed or displaced at any time during the meeting. It's pretty cut and dry, pretty simple. Anything else that, like the discussion, Ron?
It just keeps everybody together, whether it's Jerry or WLOH, right?
Right, yeah. So, like you say, you're in the short-term media zone, you have, 10 minutes might be a little short, I might consider maybe not 30 minutes, no, 10?
10. I mean, basically the idea is to come up and get like a closer in, in the mission or whatever, but not to just hang out there. If they get, to get a closer up shot or some video footage, but then that's not where you would want people just hanging out in the sits. It is, in the way...
Yeah, it's right in the front.
We don't want it stopping people from being able to get some...
Also, right behind where they traditionally set up, there is like a three-foot barrier that needs to be, or not barrier, but a three-foot zone that needs to be cleared for fire marshal safety. So, you can't be setting up and blocking anybody coming down to the exit. And I can tape that off tonight if you want to kind of see.
I think that would actually be helpful, just so we all kind of see it, like that's what it is. But it doesn't need to be permanent, just unless we're discussing it, people kind of are clear on where, where that is. That sounds good.
All right, perfect. So...
All right. Talk about tonight. Very good. I think that's everything, right?
Yes. We'll get back on schedule, we can start reviewing our meetings, recording that non-site for budget, we'll get back and we can start, we can handle this kind of, start that thing.
That sounds, that sounds good, yeah. So, we were talking about, you know, the times of these meetings and what we were sort thinking is, let's get to the budget, let's get that done, and then we kind of do an evaluation of, so since we won't have all these budget workshops and stuff, at when do we just want to have our regular pre-meeting schedule, now or later in the afternoon or part of the week, so we'll, we'll follow up on that one.
Yes.
Good.
That's it. Yes? Yeah, very good.